Yes, sir. We pray with patience.
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, God, we love you. We thank you for today. We thank you for this Easter season. We thank you for your resurrection. We thank you for being able to celebrate that. We would be asked that you would just be with us tonight. Be with our city leaders, Lord. I pray that you would just give them wisdom and guidance. Will we just thank you for all that you do? We thank you for the weather. We thank you for the safety that you've given us so far. Will we just ask that you just continue? Continue to just allow us to serve you. We love you, in your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Yonley, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for the great justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene. We'll start with a roll call. Ms. Yonley.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Marty Lindebury.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dan Knight.
Here.
Don Rowland.
Here.
Jimmy Conda.
Here.
The city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made yet? Any motions?
I'll make a motion if we approve the agenda, but that's no.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and second. All those in paper say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from March 8, 2022. Are there any changes that need to be made there? Do we have a motion?
Making.
Go ahead.
Make a motion as we approve the minutes, that's no.
I'll say it.
Motion and second. All those in paper say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the councilman? Yes, sir. Step forward and tell us who you are. Tell us what neighborhood you live in.
I'm Mr. Mayor. Matthew Miller. Live on South Forty Road.
Sir, good to see you.
We're familiar with each other. I just wanted to talk about South Forty. I talked to Isaac this morning. Actually, I called him last week and he called this morning. And I was out of town, so I went and saw my neighbor, Carl Adams, and discussed South Forty Road. The way I understood it from our last discussion was that the city's under the belief that the road stops at the top of the hill, the end of, between Doyle Rights and Randy Greenwood's property line, right at their property line. So my question today is, because we're having issues with the road from that point down, as well as the initial half, but the neighbors that own this private drive, apparently, have had some discussions about what we can do to fix that. And Isaac said that he told Mr. Adams this morning that he was willing to come down and replace a culvert, potentially add a second culvert. My question is, is what would it take for me to get the city to even cut a ditch for us?
That's a good question. We don't really have any ditch cutting machinery.
Okay.
So I think that's something to talk to Isaac about. If Isaac wants to cut in a ditch and thinks that he has the capability of doing so, we're not going to stop him from doing it.
Okay. Okay. So, I mean, because the reality is, it's going to have to have rock. I mean, it's a mud mess. And I'm sure he can vouch for that from being down there this morning. So if we could potentially get that to happen, we will certainly consider putting rock on it to correct our issue. So then...
So you're saying if we cut a ditch and put some culverts in, you guys would pitch in for some gravel?
We'd pitch in for some gravel.
Okay.
So then the question then becomes about the first half of the road from Campbell Loop up to the top of it.
Uh huh.
Have we looked at doing anything with that? Because that really, that's a creek, you know? It's a creek. I mean, there were eight-inch ditches through the middle of it this year. So, and it's been, to be honest, it's been over a year and a half since anybody's done anything with it, other than myself and one of the other neighbors. You know, it's not, we don't feel like it's our responsibility to save people's automobiles in time.
Uh huh.
So...
We don't have the equipment.
Well, yeah, we don't have the, we don't own the equipment.
Yeah. So yes, we will get out there and give you some love.
Okay.
It's going to be the same love we gave you in the past, unfortunately.
You know what? I understand that, but that's more love than we've gotten in five years. Okay? So...
Well, it hasn't been five years since I've seen you.
Well, the last time rock, real rock was put on it was seven years ago. So, and I would appreciate it, because it needs, it needs help. It absolutely needs help, and it's...
And I'm not going to say I guarantee you guys will blow smoke. You know as well as I do, you're the forgotten stepchild way out there on the north end of town.
Sure, absolutely.
We usually don't come until you call.
I know. I know. And I've avoided calling because I get tired of calling, right? I get tired of calling, because we all work a full day's work and we get tired of dealing with it.
I know. The reality is the reality. The road is not...
It's not an acceptable road.
It's not an acceptable road. It was never put into the standards that we can get any state funding to help us with it. We did talk to the county.
Yeah.
I think somebody out there had mentioned that you guys have just de-annexed from us.
And we've still, we're still discussing that.
So when that was said, I called the judge personally and said, "Hey, Judge, if they come knocking, West Fork says okay."
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be ugly.
No, no, I understand.
But at the same time, we don't have the resources to do what that road needs, and we're not going to pretend that we do.
And I get that. And I think part of the discussion with the county is going to be, if we do de-annex, are they going to take care of it?
And so I can tell you from the current county judge, who will only be there a short time, the answer is no.
Right.
So...
I understand there's a new judge coming.
There's a new judge coming to town. There could be a whole new development out there in your neighborhood. They could bring all kinds of exciting things to your world, wanted or not wanted, could be coming shortly.
Well, yeah. Not really on our road, so that's, that's the good part.
I have a question. It seems like I remember that there's not a lot of easement on either side where you have much, any work with any ditching?
I think it's 50-foot from the center of the road, 50, so 25 each direction.
Oh, well, that should be nothing.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of the water lines run up the ditches.
The water line actually runs right up the center of the road.
Okay. Yeah, so there's some other things going on out there that make it a little bit interesting, the way the drives drain down into the main road.
Drives drain into the road. They don't drive, they don't drain very well into the ditch because that's just the way it was.
The facts of the matter are, that started out as a private drive. This body annexed you when you guys came and asked to be annexed. And at that time, you guys were thinking, hey, the city's annexed us? We're probably going to get some runoff out of here.
That was before I owned property there, but still.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think it was annexed originally for fire protection, to be quite honest.
Could be.
The old guy that used to be the inspector, I can't remember his name, when I was building my home, he came out and we pitched. He told me that the original owner of that property years ago wanted to be annexed. So it was somebody that's, I don't think he even exists, probably passed away by now. But he wanted his property in the West Fork City Minutes. And so the city council at that time acknowledged his request. And that's how we got into City Minutes. Now, that's what I was told by the old man.
I mean, the reality is, if we de-annex, the worst thing that's going to happen is our insurance rates are going to go up.
That's right.
You know, I mean, but, okay.
And from the city's standpoint, the worst thing that happens is, instead of getting property, well, instead of getting it directly from you, it's going to two-step through the county back to us, and they're going to carve out a piece of it.
Sure. That's right.
So, I'm not, I don't want you guys to de-annex. Don't get me wrong, I'm just simply saying, you know as well as I do, the city doesn't have the resources to come in and turn that into what you guys would, you know, what would be acceptable.
Right. Well, and that's, you know, it's interesting because acceptable, it was, would you agree acceptable 10 years ago? It wasn't that bad?
My first call.
It wasn't bad. It wasn't, you know, it was twice as good as, or not three times as good as it is now, because the road was higher and the gravel was taken care of. And that just all stopped. And I, you know, I kind of know when it stopped without calling out any names.
Did it mean?
Well, it's, no, it's actually stopped when Butch retired.
I was going to say, I didn't think.
When Butch retired, it stopped. Because if I called him that day, somebody was down there working on that road. He put gravel on it when we requested gravel. So somehow he had the budget. Somehow he had the budget to do it.
I'll dodge that one.
Okay. And, but it is what it is. We, you know, we're at the point now where if we can get some ditches cut, we would strongly consider putting some gravel on it ourselves.
Okay. So did you talk to Isaac about cutting the ditches?
We haven't talked to him. He's not here, is he?
He left, yeah.
We didn't talk.
We saw you guys here.
He saw us.
Out of here, out of here.
Dude, I'm out of here. Well, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Yeah, talk to Isaac and I'll tell you we talked to him.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. Start with the planning commission, Walter.
Good evening. So a little more business items going on. We had a public hearing for both a variance and a rezone, which we will have recommendation for the rezone here on new business. Variance, we approved as the board zoning adjustment. Where did we settle on? Oh, yeah, we allowed the frontage to be 100 feet. We're allowing the rear setback to go down to 25 feet. And we're allowing the side setbacks to be 5 feet rather than the 7. And we discussed it out, that's going to be closer to what we're kind of looking at for the new zoning, hopefully anyways. So it kind of fits in with that, and it will be under a new designation. The R2 shouldn't really survive. It should turn back into more of a mixed zone use. And then in our regular meeting, we split lot. It's now two lots. So it's got a variance approved and a split lot. So then it'll be waiting on a possible rezone. And then finally, as for our special meetings, Julia Ritchie, we're finally getting to the future land use map and deciding what areas we're looking for future development and where that might be. So input would be very appreciated because we need it. And that's about it for us. We're moving ahead.
Where's that at?
Which was 164, no, 120, 26.
Just south of that main building.
Yeah, 164. Right, right next to Matthews.
Any other questions for Walter? So a couple of things, Walter. Isaac told me before he left, they are working on the new plat for Smith Street. So that is moving forward slowly, but I guess I've met with him and told him that they are trying to get that...
Right, we had a couple maps. We were waiting to finish out the plan.
So that's moving now. I met with some other developers yesterday afternoon. I showed them, actually, I gave them a copy of the new zoning.
Yeah, it's getting pretty...
Whatever, whatever we call that piece.
Oh, yeah, the wordage.
Yeah.
It's getting pretty well close to finalized, yeah.
But they took it with them. They liked it. They liked where the city was going.
Okay.
And I think from what Isaac said, we'll be seeing some more of them shortly.
Okay, cool. I'd like to discuss that.
Yeah. And I think, I think the biggest thing on the planning, as far as pushback amongst the planning commission, is do we, do we allow three stories? Do we create a zone that is specific for three stories? So we can say it can happen here.
We have now. That got added in. It's a specific large development multifamily. It's just over five units. Our current, where we're at it, is five units is the kind of, or each actual building with housing units in it is at five. And then we created a new district that's for above that. It's solely, it's exactly the same as our, what is it? R2 now, or 4? The one that allows for five-unit buildings, it's exactly the same other than it allows for more than that. And then we also added another commercial that isn't, it's basically the same as our current commercial, but it's a little less, or a little more restrictive on the size of business that can go into it.
So, yeah, they're really making some headway, and we will, we are seeing more and more people coming, so.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Tracy? Give us the court report.
Hello. Okay. Things have been getting much busier, it seems like, at the courts. It seems like instead of people following and taking care of things, they're actually coming in now. And so we had like our busiest day last Thursday, and we had a couple trials and everything. And that was, we even had guests come in and just watch the trials. That was interesting. So anyway, as far as the dispersments go, they were, we were up about 17,000 from last month, but we were down about 23,000 from the same month last year. And then we're down a little over 28,000 from the same time last year altogether in our year-to-date. And then our citations were about 100 higher this time than we were at this time last year. So anyway, and we have continued to scan and working on our technology and trying to get some of that stuff taken care of at a lab.
Any questions for Tracy? So as Tracy pointed out, they're seeing more people. They're up 100 people this time last year than they were last, but dispersments are down a little bit. Go ahead.
Well, the weather kind of threw us off, okay? So now our drawers are getting full with trials and with the trial parts because all the snow people, we couldn't just say, you know, you couldn't just mark them all as FTAs. Everybody had to be continued. And so that was a lot more paperwork and stuff, but, and I wonder if that's what part of the numbers are, you know, is that they didn't get to come to court, they got pushed off. So Jason's kind of running behind, since we only see him once a month. And so his docket served. I mean, there's a bunch of people. We had 158, he had 158 cases on this week's, and then three trials, and then he had to continue several trials. So...
Okay.
Okay.
I have one question. I just wanted to ask you, is everything going good with us at the jail?
Yes.
Are we good?
I wish that some of the other county jails would emulate as efficient as you pass our.
I was just going to say, if there's anything, because I'm involved in it all the time, so did you hear anything there?
No, I think that, I think they would wish that we were a little bit quicker to let them know who we needed to see. But, but y'all do.
We wish that about everybody, so.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you, Tracy. Blair? What do we have in the library report?
So I'm going to talk about more of last week rather than last month, because we spent most of last month planning for last week. So last week was National Library Week. We had several events that I want to tell you about first. In partnership with the Friends of the West Fork Library, we hosted a presentation by Suzanne Underwood Collins, who is a 2022 poet laureate of Arkansas. She came to read poetry. We had over 40 participants, I think closer to 60. But they came to hear her read poetry, including the senior English class at the high school came. So that was, that was 40, and we had more people than that, so roughly about 60. So that was, that was a really great event. Another big thing I wanted to tell you about is the debut of the plant shared library, located in the south hall of the library before you get to the meeting room. We now have a plant cutting library. So it operates on the honor system of take a cutting, leave a cutting. Right now, we have, we have pot those cuttings, inch plant cuttings, and a bunch of hidden chicks available. And that's thanks to our, you know, our patrons who are really good with gardening, and our volunteers who got it, got us enough that we could, we could debut it. And so it's fully stocked right now. So come and see that. It's really neat, and I hope the community likes it. The last thing that I wanted to talk about, if you look on your stat sheet, I've started collecting reference statistics. So these are all the questions answered. They run from, you know, where is the city admin building to where can I get my taxes done? Where do I find the tax? All kinds of, so you'll find the reference questions there. It's under, I think I put it as questions answered, because not everyone understands, I guess, what reference means a couple of different things. So questions answered by library staff and myself. I've also started keeping in-house use statistics of materials. So anything that is used by a person but doesn't get checked out. So anything in our reference collection, which is another way you can use reference, to mean anything that doesn't get checked out in the library, our local history collections, our rare stuff, our genealogy stuff, that will be what that is. Any questions?
Any questions for Blair?
Okay.
So I'll just say, Blair, I'll call him out. I attended a family night last month. I did some games down at the library. And I just want to say, council missed out. Didn't they?
We had a good time, right?
I had a great time. Got a tour of the library, some of Daniel Campbell's books, some of the history of, they've got a big section of just history, genealogy of West Fork. Looking good down there. Talking good things going on.
All the time to do research on their family, the West Fork Cemetery, all the other cemeteries. We have cemetery records, census records, marriage records, everything you need to conduct genealogy history on your family in the area. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. I think I beat everybody's time at the game they had. That's why Blair didn't bring it up.
It's on video somewhere.
Chief Nelson?
All right. We had a pretty busy month. We had 397 calls for service, with about 135 citations, 66 warrants, which is one of our busier months. We got another grant. It's a step grant, so you'll see my guys out a little bit more. We were able to get $23,000 in overtime through the state to do their DWI patrol of seatbelts and unattended driving, which has been going pretty good. We got six DWIs last month. Another thing I want to make you guys aware about, gas prices. Everybody knows these Tahoe's are taking $90 to fill up every time they're at the gas pump. I know we went from officers spending about 400 to last month, it was about, what, $807, $800? So...
So Christie has taken the liberty to underline fuel expense in just about every department.
Every department, yeah. I just want to make you guys aware, it's high right now. I think that's about it. I think this year, we're up to 46,000 in grants that we've got, so. Any questions?
Keep it up.
And they are going to give each officer $5,000, I believe. So that'll be good. Oh, I didn't mention, Greenland has decided to hire another officer, which means at some point, I'll be back here and we'll have to discuss what we're going to do financially. Because the details of it is, they say that they wanted to prepare for the future and go ahead and get the, get more policemen for when they grow. Well, what that does is, that kind of takes us out of the midnight loop for them. But they still want to have the same agreements. They still want to be sworn in West Fork and Greenland. So that's, I don't know where that's going to go. I don't know where that's going to go. We just signed an agreement with them to run through December 2023. And I guess two months later now, they are, they...
Well, they got a new chief.
Huh?
Got a new chief.
Got a new chief. And that always goes to the period where they get more stuff. He did say, the new chief did say he wouldn't even attempt to hire or wasn't looking at anything, till at least it was budget time and we had time to discuss it. So I'm just giving you guys a heads up. Anything else that I can think of?
So, is the scenario then that for us to have the coverage we need, we're going to have to be paying for them ourselves and not splitting the cost with Greenland, is that what?
That's basically what it would be. It's a bigger cost for them than it is us.
Right.
I think they were giving us about 19, maybe 19? It went up a little bit, maybe 21,000 a year? But they were, we were paying for the rest of the officer, the car, the uniforms. They'll have to do that themselves. I think we figured out it's going to cost them about $55,000 to do that, plus vehicles, plus. And from what I've heard, that may be coming out of reserves for a while. But that's what I know so far. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Isaac's not here. Nick, are you going to give us a little update on Isaac's department?
I can give you an update on what I know, at least.
An update on the pollen closure?
Yeah. Yeah, I provided an update for the pack. But, yeah, the original project work really don't, there hadn't been a whole lot since last month. We've been trying to get Boils back up with their facilities and contractor. Look at the man, he's again, they didn't want to come the first time. They thought everything was good. And we found some results that proved otherwise. And now they're ready to come out and look at it with us. So we're trying to get that arranged. The weather hasn't been cooperating very much with us in the past couple of weeks. Yeah, enclosure plan, we've gotten everything in place. We're actually going to be doing a pre-construction meeting next week, starting on Wednesday. And Denali is ready to go, ready to get started. So we're excited to get that underway.
And that's 60 days, correct?
It's a 60-day contract. And then I have been there, a couple of other things we've been doing for y'all. We've been working on some sewer extensions. We did the church street, you know, plans. And Isaac's, his folks have been out building that. They're getting close to completion there. And then they'll be moving over to Hidden Creek Extension, which we actually got help department approval this afternoon. So that was nice. We got approval and no comments, which is something that I think, we got a different reviewer this time than my usual friend that likes to give us comments. But that was good, that was something we submitted on at the end of March and got approval in less than two weeks, that's good. We also did some surveys out there on Centennial, so we're looking at an extension there to pick up some more services and I think get rid of some pump lines as well, so we'll be working on that next.
What would it take to get our boys down at South Forty tied in? Would have to bore the river?
Yeah, it'd take a little bit of work, yeah, just a little bore in the river.
We may look at that soon.
It's not too far once you get across the river. You're right, water line with you. It's just rolling parallel, you know.
It's mass fault.
Y'all got any questions?
Where are we with the Homestead edition?
Good question.
So you may know more than I, I visited with Pam, Pamela, the other day. I know they're still hoping, but I don't think she had any updates as far as...
Yeah, we are, we are working on a very engineering report. The state has asked for that. It's atypical for usually at this stage, but given we're asking for like over two million dollars in straight grant money, I think they wanted to look at the alternatives and, you know, make sure that's the best thing that can be done out there. So, our goal is to get that submitted by mid-May, submit it in front of the advisory committee in June for them to review that. And there is a new president of the HOA out there, and Pam stepped down. I can't remember the lady's name, she emailed me last week, just introducing herself and asking for an update, so I let her know where we were. But it is still moving forward, we're working in the background on some stuff, so I'm hoping to get something in. We have heard that through A and R C, that the ARPA money at the state level may get released June, July timeframe. There'll be an application that comes out, I've signed up to be on the notice list, so, you know, that would be a perfect project, candidate for that, amongst other things, so we'll see. Not sure how much money is going to funnel through that, I've heard anywhere from a hundred million to five hundred million, depends who you talk to, I don't think they're quite sure yet how much it's going to, how much that will end up with for warrants here, but...
So we do know, Dylan, the quorum court decided not to help get any assistance with that with their ARPA funds. I had several conversations with some of the JPs on that. Now, it's hard to argue. Chief Myers will be up here in a minute, and he'll tell you that they did a good job spending their ARPA funds, because the fire departments are getting new air tanks and breathing apparatuses out of some of that.
See, some of the comments I heard on that, that a lot of the JPs was thinking this was West Fork, and the only reason, you know, because you're overseeing it, it's not in the West Fork city limits, but a lot of the JPs up there were thinking it was West Fork.
That could be. I know I spoke directly with a couple of them, because JP Wilson was on board for it, you know, he was helping with the project. A couple of the others felt like it wasn't the county's job to help them out of that bind. And maybe so, maybe not, and I thought it was the county gave approval for that, or they were one level of approval for it. JP Fleming had a strong opinion that if they helped with warrant, that opened up the county to everybody that had a step system, and so...
They should give a lot of money to nonprofits.
So, we do know the county won't be helping with that, but hopefully the state will have some dollars that can go into it and get, I mean, it's not, it's obviously it's going to be a help for West Fork, but at the end of the day, it's a big help for that entire community, the environment, the whole, it's a mess that they have going on right now.
We just got to do a good job selling it to them in our report, and this is...
Yes.
And I think, you know, I mean, I'm hopeful we'll get that moved forward. I mean, it's definitely needed, not only for them, but for the city too.
Have we heard any more, Christie, you may have an answer to this as well, of our request to forgive some of our bonds through that?
No, I got the impression that they shut them off.
Lynn, is that camera still catching on a little?
Oh, geez, sorry.
He thought that was a high rate.
I got the impression that they shut us down on that, but they never came out and
said one hundred percent either way, but they, they had meetings and we have not been contacted anymore for...
Okay.
Yeah, I think they had a commission meeting in March, I haven't heard of it, so. Of course, like I said, the rescue plan money, if it frees up, that might be an opportunity. And they said September, the other infrastructure funding may be hidden in their books as well, they didn't say how much, but there is money coming in, so some of these things that we put in applications for last summer, needs, you know, that's, there's some opportunities there when applications do come out that we can go after.
And part of that, just so everybody is aware, I think you all know that we applied to have our bonds forgiven with some of those ARPA funds, and there for a while Christie was getting a lot of back and forth communication, wanting more information, more numbers, but there was, there was a pretty heavy turnover down at the state in those departments, correct?
Yeah, they, you know, their director retired, our project administrator has been with us for, you know, on this job for seven years, just retired, so, you know, they've had a lot of, a lot of people leaving and not filling the gaps, so, you know, I guess the good news is, is I'm working with the project administrator that we have now, who took Dean's spot, is the same person I've been working with in Greenland for the past nine months, and then Alan, who's been the engineer for us here, is there, so we're working as a team and all.
Good.
You know, things are still moving along, so, but it's, it has slowed down there, they're definitely understaffed, that's for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Steve. Chad, this is Parks Report.
So, the Parks Committee did not meet in March, I didn't have any main prepared package as far as the minutes go, but we did meet today, so we'll have something next month. We really hadn't been doing anything. So, baseball and softball is in full swing, teams have been practicing, high school's been playing down there for a while, our season actually finally starts next week, and I think we're ready, fields are in game shape finally, it's taken us a while to get there with all the rain and stuff, the fields are in good shape, facilities are in good shape, so we're ready, I think. So, that'll kick off next week, we're ready for that. I do want to let you know the golf tournament, this golf tournament that was held down there in March had eighty-two participants in it, we got a lot of great feedback, and I just want to reiterate how well that course is doing, and it's bringing people to our community, it's bringing good people to our community.
I forwarded that email that we received to all the council, everyone received that, didn't they?
Yeah, some of them reached out to me personally as well, I talked to Kevin, that was the, that put the tournament on, and they just had a lot of good things today, so we're proud of that. I did want you to know they had eighty-two participants, which is really a good turnout. We are working on the Independence Day celebration, I do want to remind you all that's going to be on July first, and it is going to be a full event. We're already in the process of securing our vendors, our fireworks, and booking our inflatables, and musicians, and all of that, so we're still planning to move forward with a full event. I do want to give you a heads up, that event's going to be a little bit more costly than it's been in the past, just like fuel and everything else. Everything that we're, that we're booking has gone up a little bit, but we're going to work hard to get some more donors and sponsors and things to try to offset some of that, but that event, line item may go over budget, but we're still going to move forward, we'll move some stuff around and try to get donations and sponsors and still put on a greater deal. So we're looking forward to really getting back to doing the full event, giving out food, the whole work, so we're excited about that, made some decisions on that today, so we're moving forward there. I do want to mention the outdoor stage, we're still, that's in our planning, we're still researching, we're still, there's not a lot of progress there to report, but it's still definitely on our radar and in our plans, and we talked about it at our meetings, and we are working, and we still hope to at least, we'd love to get completed this year, but it will definitely be started this year and hopefully completed, so. And I think that's about it.
Any questions for Chad?
No, but I've got a question in general. You know how we don't have a sign that like says softball fields or anything like that? Have you ever thought of that? Or, you know, because we're going to have like an outdoor stage or disc golf?
We have, we've had some, we did have some signs that said Carter Park, I don't know if they're still, there was one before we stopped, I think they're used to it on the bridge, I don't know if they're still there, it depends with you, but that's something I can...
I thought I caught myself checking to see if it was there.
Something we can look into. I know that we've had some activities down there, we had another high school, private school that rented our fields to play games on a couple of times already, and they always just ask what's the address?
Right.
And they put it in, but yeah, that's probably not a bad idea.
When I go other places, if I don't know the address, then I'm looking for a sign, and since we have so much activity going on there, I mean, it's always, you know, full.
It's time to hear it.
So, along with that, Misty, there's some development that's being looked at in that area, and hopefully with that, we can make a straight road coming in off of Di Creek that comes straight to Carter Park.
I was just talking about that seriously like two days ago, I was like, wouldn't this be real convenient right here?
Yeah, so it'd be nice, instead of routing through all of those little, the narrow streets and roads, to just have a straight shot coming in out of the existing sewer plan. And again, that's something we need to be thinking about, what are we going to use that for? And I think if we, if we start to see some development in that area, that may help us or spur us into what we would like to see in some of those areas, so. I'd also like to point out that Chad's going to join me in Ask the Mayor, in our next Ask the Mayor, he's going to give an update, and he's pretty excited about coming and updating everyone on the stage and what's going on with the parks, so.
Chad recommends that every month the new department head do that.
That's what Blair's pushing for.
Yeah. Chad was backing it too?
I had no choice. I wasn't given much of a choice. Mayor says do it. Yeah, I'll do it happily, cheer for you, so.
Anything else for Chad?
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, can you guys at, at South Forty, do you guys see the fireworks show when we do that?
Yes.
Some of you, anyway?
Yeah, I can see it real good from the porch. I'm selling tickets. Last year they wasn't as high. They've always been.
We had some really dense air getting in and it just sat on top of us.
Chief Myers?
They're in our chest, completely done or not? Something I came up with since our department head meeting, we are planning on doing our boots and badges, blood drive again, it'll be in June, I don't know exactly what date yet, they're still trying to work just the best date, so everybody needs to come out and support their local fire department, so we can hang on to our title, be a complete department, like we did last year. The rural side did buy a new fire truck for our Sugar Mountain station, which is safer that station, a lot of this switching around, they put it in Greenland, moved that truck to Sugar Mountain, but it still will help our overall coverage area tremendously. Real good truck, we got it from Bentonville, almost set it, they take really good care of their vehicle, so we were really blessed to be able to get the opportunity to purchase that truck. Average call volumes, eighty calls I believe, which has been about average, we went from one week of snow and ice, putting chains on trucks, probably grass fires next week, so really odd, odd month. Still working on our running trucks, oddly enough, the company that builds the tank units to go in the back to put out fires caught on fires, so we're waiting for that all to get straightened out. Other than that, about all I've got.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. So Chief Myers, he comes in every month, and he tells us that his call volume is about average, he thinks we have short memories, and we actually have a graph there that shows us that the fire department calls have been trending up, we can go back to last year, last January and see that, but I think if we just went back another year, we would see they were averaging in the mid-sixties, and now we're, now we're starting to hit eighties pretty commonly, so.
You're seeing that.
Yeah.
He's just being modest.
He is. All right.
So, our rain balances are up by about thirty-two thousand so far this year, and our departments are almost two hundred thousand dollars under budget. We do have one department that's slightly under budget, but if you look at their actual line items, they just have one line item that's up, and it's just paid heavy at the first year, so I foresee it hopefully balancing itself out. Our sales tax, we're still running between seven and eight percent increase for the city, and a four percent between the city and county. The water budget, although it looks pretty good, it shows that we're seventy-seven thousand dollars under budget. If you look at what we need for our long-term obligations, that really adds up to about two thousand under budget, so we're still on the right side of things, but I think it's going to be a couple of months coming up with rainy season, so right now it's holding its own, hopefully it'll stay that way. On your financials, you'll see that I did go in and underline everything, we're through the first quarter, so ideally all of your expenses would be under twenty-five percent. The ones that I've underlined are over twenty-five percent. The majority of those are things that we just pay heavy at the first year, so they'll usually even out by the end of the year. There are, I know some of the departments, a lot of departments have had a lot of equipment or vehicle maintenance this year, I think some of that's because they've kind of tried to not do as much the last couple of years, trying to be conservative, and it's catching up with a lot of them this year, but hopefully there'll be some other areas in the budget that we can offset that moving forward. But overall, I think it looks pretty good for the first quarter. I will point out on the water and sewer, just because we're watching that really close, if you look at the percentage of sewer sales versus what we've paid, the Fayetteville for the sewer, City of Fayetteville for the sewer, those are both in the twenty-four percent range, so that's good, that budget-wise we're making that. The payment that we made to Fayetteville the first of April, which is obviously not on this report, was sixty-four thousand, and our income's been running at about forty-eight, so that was kind of our first rainy month, and that's probably what we'll see the next couple of months, so. I know Nick and them are getting ready to put some flow meters in for the sewer, right? So hopefully we can see if there's some areas, see if we've improved the areas that we think we have, and find some more areas where there might be some eye on eye that we still could capture some of that and decrease that, so we'll see how that goes the rest of the year. I think that's all I have on the finances, does anybody have any questions?
So, just to quick and correct me if I'm wrong, Christie, but on the treasurer's report that Christie gives us that shows the sales tax that we've collected so far and the percentage of, that is seven percent up over last year, same time last year, and last year we were up thirteen percent. So, we are seeing steady increase in those sales tax numbers, even though it's starting to, it's not as high this year as it was, and the county sales tax has really fallen off this year, but we are still seeing really good sales tax revenue growth.
We did have our citywide cleanup this last weekend, we had one hundred and fourteen loads total, which is not very much. We typically see a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty on Friday by itself, so I'm not really sure. We advertised the same way we always have, put on the water bills, go down on Facebook, have it up in the city, and we did the same type of advertising, had a lot of calls, people wanting to know what it was, so of course it was freezing Friday, so I don't know if it had something to do with it. Typically it doesn't matter if it's raining or whatever, they still bring it out. I'd like to think it's because everything was worth cleaning up, they needed to bring anything, but...
Shouldn't all of it come back?
But obviously thank you to Isaac's guys, and Enland is always really, really good to help with that, they always have a lot of guys come down to help and are very responsive to help the people that need help on loading, so. The only other thing that I have to talk about is our photo reporting, and I almost didn't even talk about it tonight, because I don't know if I even understand it well enough myself to explain it. It changes daily, and we are required to do our first annual reporting by the end of April, and we've had at least one training a week with municipal league in the last month, and every time we get an email from them or something, they're like, oh, do it this way, oh, do it this way, oh, it's different. Just last week we had a training, I think it was maybe Wednesday, and then that afternoon they sent out an email that said audit requirements have completely changed. So it's really frustrating right now, it's free money, so we don't want to complain, and we like that we got it, but the reporting is a little stressful right now. What they're encouraging cities to do right now is claim our full amount, there's a limit, I think it's ten million dollars, which we didn't obviously get anywhere near that, but if the city has received less than that, they can claim the full amount as public safety, fire and police salaries and expenses. And basically what that allows us to do is treat it kind of like we did the American Rescue Funds, where we get to claim that report at one time, that we have covered those expenses with this money, then we get to put it in our reserves and use it however we want. The positives of that is it's a one-time report, we, once we get that reported, we don't have to mess with it again, and it also keeps us from having deadlines, so reporting it, the original ways that they were telling us that we had to put it for water, sewer, or specific projects, we had a deadline that we had to have it obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four, and we had to have it spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. If we report it as covering our expenses for public safety, then those deadlines go away, so there's not a deadline to have it obligated or to have it spent. away, so there's not a deadline to have it obligated or to have it spent. We have a training again tomorrow, so hopefully I'll learn more about it, but the kind of questions that I have is we've already spent some of it and they're wanting us to go and report it all as public safety and come and reimburse ourselves for that. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with that, but I trust that Arkansas State Police will not lead us wrong in how to do it, so we'll get there. I have a vacation coming up, so I wish we'd get there quickly so I can get it done before I leave, because I want that on my plate, because it has to be done by April 30th and I don't want to be that person that's got...
I bet they'll move that too.
You think they'll leave it? Yeah. If not, there's going to be five hundred cities on April 29th trying to get in and do it and it's going to crash the system and that's what we've seen this whole time. So anyway, that's kind of the update. If we see that that's the best way to go and want to do that, there will be resolutions required that basically are doing budget adjustments for last year, which we've already done and we'll have to go back and do them again. We'll know more hopefully by next month, we'll know more. I'm planning also to get with Isaac, hopefully by next month's meeting, we'll know where he's at on the projects that we've already approved and we'll see if we've got some extras there that we need to reallocate, move around, and then we have already asked the department heads to start looking at if they have some requests for the money that we'll be getting in June or July, so we can start looking at that. Obviously there may not be a rush, but we also, in my opinion, don't want to just stick it in reserves and sit on it if we have things that we need to deal with, so.
Any questions for Christie? That's quite a report.
So what are you going to do?
Thank you, Christie. All right, next is new business. Ordinance five zero six, it's a rezone of 152 North Centennial Avenue from Commercial to R2. Walter?
Yes.
Tell us what the planning commission found on this.
We have voted to recommend approval of the rezone of 152 North Centennial from Commercial to R2, basically for the same reasons we approved the variances. That's kind of where we're going in that, for that area for the most part, and it would fit with a little bit higher density residential and mixing low commercial use.
What are they wanting to put on this parcel?
Duplexes, two, two-unit or two, is it two units per building or four units?
Townhomes.
Townhomes, four units per building, two of them on separate lots because we now split it. So each lot will now each have its own four-minute technical unit.
Any thoughts on the council?
What happens with the commercial part up front?
It'll all be R2.
It's where I thought we were supposed to keep. Going to keep it commercial in the front or residential by that?
Well, with what we're kind of deciding it out, having, trying to define what commercial we want to go in there versus limiting it to how far, we're seeing more of a mixed use is probably a better use of the area than going just straight commercial, allowing on the front because there's so many people that still use it as residential and it hopefully helps with more of a denser, denser development of it, but still allow for residential use. If we just go ahead and make it commercial, then that's all ability.
Any questions, thoughts?
Do you hear a motion to suspend the rule, they wanted to proceed?
I'll make it, we suspend the rules and read by title only.
We have a motion second to suspend the rules and read the title only. Misty Cottle? I'm sorry, what?
I'll say it.
Oh.
Did you get a second?
Yeah, I think we got a second over.
Yes.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dina McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
And Jimmy Condit?
Yes.
We have an ordinance rezoning certain lands from Commercial to Residential to R2 in the City of West Fork, Arkansas. Now you would hear a motion to do pass if they want to proceed.
I want the motion to pass.
We have a motion in second to pass it, to pass ordinance five zero six. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dina McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condit?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
Also on that note, it'd be nice to help with how far down 71 we want to go with that mixed use versus allowing commercial or just residential. So that's where we're at right now really with the future land use map of deciding how far we want to take it and where we want to stop it and what parts.
It's nice to see us take all the flat land through there and turn it into...
Exactly, and that's where we're at. We, you know, how much commercial do we want versus how much residential we want to get.
That's kind of what it is.
And so it's that fine balance of getting in, people living here versus then they also need services, but if we use a smaller land for residential, then you have services going in, you know.
Okay. Mr. Brandon, you have been rezoned.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Do we have any other business on the council?
No, we have a guest here. If she wants to get up and introduce herself and...
Sure.
Tell her...
Mayor's meeting.
All right, all right. Hi there, everyone. My name is Sharon Lloyd. I met Misty and I know John and others. I am running for Washington County Judge. So I currently work for the judge. I have been the grants administrator for the last six years. So all of these interesting things that you talked about with grants and things, I'm just sucking it all in. When I first came to the county, the grants was probably about two million and this past year we were fourteen million in grants. So we are working hard in the grants department. The year before that was ten million because they are out there and I loved it when the, who was it, where you, yes, set grants and those kind of things. Yes, those grants are out there. So I would be willing to share any of my grant sites with anybody that if you would like it. I spoke at the Lions Club in Elkins today and I shared the grant sites. If anybody's interested in it because it's, you have to be a bulldog to get those grants, but if you're willing to do that, you know, you can get the grant. So that's a part of my job that I have enjoyed. I have also served on the form court as Justice of the Peace and my husband served on the form court as Justice of the Peace, so we have that experience also. I know, as you mentioned, Judge Wood is not going to run again, he's running for a higher office, so the seat is open and a bunch of us have jumped in, six of us altogether, so you have lots of choices out there, but I would love to speak to anyone about anything that, you know, you want to speak to me about. I do feel like with it, working with the judge for the last six years, that I have learned a lot in the county. So do I ask for questions now or do we just want to do it later?
You can either, you can ask for them or I'll ask for them for you.
Okay, all right.
Does anyone have any questions for potential Judge Lloyd, right?
Yes, yes, Sharon. Thank you, John, for that introduction.
I didn't realize who you were.
Okay, all right, all right. I am just trying to get out and I live in Curry Grove. My husband teaches at the high school there in Curry Grove. Before coming to the county, I was in education for twenty-two years, so I have background as a teacher, special ed director, assistant principal, so I do have some leadership roles that I've done in my lifetime. So I know, as you know, the county judge is like the mayor of the area. You're over the departments, so you do need some management skills and I do. I have a master's in mid-management from the University of Houston, so I have that. So anybody have a question for me? I'm excited to be here tonight. We came and we were in the parade and so that was fun to do that. Being a Curry Grove resident, I do know the small town feel and I do love it. Curry Grove is growing, lots of people moving out to Curry Grove and I, if you all want that, I wish that on your city too. You don't have a sixty-two like we do. This, usually it takes me about thirty minutes to get to work. Today it took me forty-two minutes to get to work. So you do, when you have growth, you do have other issues also, so. All right? Well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
All right, any other other business?
So you...
None from the council? I put this on the agenda at the behest of the council. So a couple of things. There are a few of us sitting up here tonight that are up for reelection. I just want to make sure that everyone knows who that is. John, Misty, Dina, Marty, myself and Ann are all up for reelection this cycle. Christie will get our packets that if you're planning on rerunning for your position, Christie will let us know when those come out. That should be, what Christie tell me?
In the May.
In the May is when we'll get that, so that we, I know some of you haven't experienced the running process before, but you'll have to go get signatures and introduce yourself like Ms. Lloyd is. Couple of y'all are really excited about this, yes. But I did, I did want to make sure everyone knew which seats were coming.
Can I say something to that?
Sure.
Sure. You look at all the dates that you have on.
So that is really good advice from someone who forgot to turn their packet in.
That's the main date presentation.
So that's coming up. Christie will keep us informed when that is. If anyone else is interested in running, there are four council seats that will be open. The mayor's seat will be open as well as the city clerks. Another item to bring up, the gas company reached out today. They're wanting to schedule a meeting with Isaac and myself. They're planning on replacing all of the metal gas pipe that runs through the city. I'm sure that's going to some sort of a poly pipe, but they're also wanting to move the meters up to the house and so away from the roads. I understand that they're just finishing up this project in Lincoln, but they're wanting to meet with Isaac and I in the next couple of weeks just to discuss scheduling so that we can let everyone know in town what's going on, why it's going on. A lot of the gas company will be in their yards, so I'll keep you updated on that. Another item I wanted to talk about, we all received an email concerning code enforcement. I haven't replied to that email yet, as you guys have noticed. Usually I get around to those emails quite a bit quicker than this. This is about the third that I've received and I know Christie's had several conversations. This is a single topic, the topic's code enforcement. To be perfectly honest, I feel like the question's been asked and answered in multiple formats multiple times. I will reply to the email, but I just wanted to let the council know that I have not blown that off, I have not completely ignored it, just kind of tired of answering the question. We did hire Kathy Gillum as code enforcement on trial period as an experimental basis. I do not have a written contract with her. It was an experimental basis that we picked up a contractor. We will see what happens with that. We're looking at some other options for code enforcement, so code enforcement hasn't been forgotten in that regard. We're still going to stay within the same constraints of our budget that we set forth with that. So if anybody has any questions regarding what was in that email, I'd be happy to answer in full detail, but I just wanted to let you know that that's why I haven't responded yet. Any questions on it? Okay.
You know that, Chad. I'm responsible for that.
Okay. I just want, like I said, typically Frank, I think you can attest to this, I'm usually pretty quick on responding to those emails when they come to me. I enjoy getting them, but like I said, on that one, I've had those questions multiple times myself. I know Christie, we've had several FOIs on it, so just want to make sure everybody was aware of what was going on there. Mayor's comments. I'm really happy with the way everything's going. I think everybody on this board knows that this is my busy season. We've talked about the group that we have working in West Fork and I know that they filled some answers or spilled some questions that normally they would probably send to me, so I appreciate y'all for everything that you do. I will check back in in just a couple of days for anybody that's asking, but anyway, that's all I really have. It's been a good quarter.
We have a good city staff?
All of them. We really do, really do.
Sir, are you waiting on a motion?
I'm waiting on you, John.
I don't wait motions.
A second.
Whatever.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
We are here in South Florida. Good to see you guys.